Yeah.
Oh, looks like we might need more chairs. We have any more?
Well, I was trying to make room for somebody here, but.
See you.
One more chair.
Yeah. I'll be here.
Yeah. I forgot.
Health Department and many.
That's right.
You're also ready. Yeah, it doesn't mean that much.
No.
Honestly, really well. Thank you for hanging out with us. Health services stuff discussed.
Okay, well, let's call a meeting to order because it is after one o'clock on October 14th. And thank you, Doug, for joining us. It's great to have you here. I'm thinking, why doesn't everyone just introduce themselves in the room? I think I just don't know everybody, but it would just be nice. We have some new employees that just joined us. Would you want to start it? Sure. Doug definitely can help and one of our two.
Nick Leib, County Administrator. Okay.
I'm Patty Doherty.
And Tony DiBozzo. Thank you very much for you and your colleagues joining us. This is going to be a great relationship and setting up for next year's legislative session. That's the key to this. Or a bird.
There you go. It'll be a bar.
No, we don't want to burn bars.
Our people in the shops. My third week. And yeah.
Can Brian Lee? John Kep, no. That's the desk or so.
Oh, true. Yeah, local is planning to get a chair. And they're good house news. So I can listen.
Matt Patterson, Strategic Commission. Crystal, their company manager.
Crystal, you're a reporter. You know, you have. On the line is Iris, and I'm going to ask Iris a few words here in a few minutes. She's waiting for a plane to take off to go someplace fancy. And I'm Doug Race with every policy advocates and Corey Barber, who's our kind of administrative scheduling person could not be here today.
Steve, sorry, guys, zooming in from down the hall. Steve Dennison, County Clerk.
Hi, Angie Powers, Administrative Assistant.
Angie, does our audio sound better?
Yes, thank you. And as Doug said, Iris Maria. And unfortunately, I'm actually just coming home, not going anywhere exciting right now, but navigating LAX at the moment. Glad to be with you, though.
Thanks, Iris.
And Bill Sinclair, Randall. There we go, Jeff and Lee, we were just doing staff introductions. Jeff, I don't know if you want to go first. You're muted. Okay, Lee, can we hear you?
Hi, good afternoon, Lee Randall, Facilities Director.
Thank you, Lee.
Let's bring Jeff back. Looks like you're unmuted, Jeff.
That's Jeff lines. Nice guitars in the background. Reed love guitars, I hope. No. That's one of my high school classmates was involved.
Oh, no, these are just for display only. They're not good at all. I don't think they're even playable.
But it's the signatures that you get on. He gets a signature when the man's come through. Looks impressive.
Yeah, much more so than they sound.
Okay. Well, don't forget Topson guitars is their world class. Yeah. Well, it's kind of an interesting day, and I feel like it's great to have all of the department heads. And would you mind if we listened to the department heads first? I just really would like to hear what they're, what they're thinking about because it is a long session. How successful we're going to be.
Well, how about, I mean, any thoughts and guidance right now? So we're going to have a governor's raise and a balance in the legislature possibly change. What's a good investment in time and energy right now? Knowing that we've got a lot of variables out there. So maybe give us guidance, just how to think about this right now.
Sure. Yeah, a quick overview, and I want to give Iris a chance to say a few words soon. First of all, we're very excited to be on board. You know, for those of you who don't know me, I grew up in Redmond. I worked with Chris quite a bit when he was at his last job. And of course, know a lot even. Super excited, so it was a hometown kid. Could not be more thrilled to be working with you guys. Our team, just so you know, is myself and Corey Barber, who's our admin person that are scheduling. We'll do all our bill tracking, be the link for any communication efforts and hearing reports, et cetera. And Iris, and what I thought is maybe we could have Iris to say a few words about herself. She and I partnered together on a variety of projects. And she's got a background in a lot of human services health issues. So give her a minute or two and introduce yourself, and I'll do the same and then.
Okay. Doug, you can come sit over here. Welcome everybody.
Sure, yeah, maybe.
Yeah, that's fine. If you're on that side, so. Because if you think about anything, and I don't want to.
Yeah. Okay. Pretty awesome for you to listen to the staff. Iris, you want to give us a few words, little background?
Sure thing, and I apologize for the background noise. LAX is obviously not the quietest airport in the world. So as Doug mentioned, I do a lot of work in the human services, social justice world. And education, health access and affordability, housing access and affordability and criminal justice work. Have a number of organizations that I've worked with in the Deschutes County area on all of those issues. Been doing this work for, I had to count the other day and realized it's almost 20 years now. Eight of those specifically in Oregon, and it's been a real pleasure to work with Doug, particularly on a lot of our workforce development issues. Obviously, that has been top of mind in the last two years. Doug and I have been doing that work, though, for longer and recognize the need, not just in New York County, but across the state. And really looking forward to this partnership and finding ways to support Doug in doing this work. Thank you.
Thanks, Iris, appreciate that. So just a little bit of background, Iris and I, Corey are the part of the firm. We work together. We also have partnerships with a couple other firms. So we are a small firm. We limit the number of clients we take. For instance, in WPA, first policy I have is have 10 clients. Four of them are very small and a couple of them don't have a bill this year. So as I said in the meeting with the commissioners and Nick and Whitney here a couple months ago, that enables us to focus a lot of our time on it soon. So it will be a top priority for us, I guarantee you. The advantage of having multiple people is you'll be able to get ahold of us. So that's going to be really good. As Commissioner Rebon mentioned, this is a period of change. Remarkable, once in a generation change where you see Salem to the Capitol and the way the building works for a variety of reasons. We've got, we're going to have a new governor, so she will be sworn in, you know, in January, which one of the three will win. If I speculated on that, Murphy's Law would tell you that I'd probably be wrong. But one of those three candidates will be the governor. And the good thing is they all have a long background in any issues that we're facing and that other counties are facing. So whichever governor gets elected, they will have a good background and a lot of good people. We'll have new agency directors. If Christine Drayson gets elected, she's going to fire them all on day one. Bessie Johnson gets elected, she says she wants the resignation letters on her desk for consideration on day one. Tina has been a little less clear, but has said she's going to make some changes too. So I think regardless of who gets elected as agency directors, of course, you know, you fire them all immediately. And that means a long period of time until the Senate confirms the new people. So I think there will be a lot of people who are selected to hold on to some of the beliefs. So we have stability. But we're also going to have change in that whole, in the House and Senate. Got a new speaker last February, Dan Rayfield, who went to Tiger High School, one of my kids went to high school, but lives in Provalis. Attorney, his wife is a social worker. He understands a lot of issues that rights, public health, hero health that you guys deal with here at the county homelessness and other things like that. Stan, I think is going to be an excellent speaker. Senate is anybody's best guess. I talked to Tim Knob last week and he's 17, I'm going to be 17. That's a pretty big jump from 12 to 17, but the polls are showing a lot of the races didn't think were going to be close or close. There's a race in Hillsborough and Western Washington County that no one thought would be on the radar screen. All show it's for the Washington area held by Democrat, but could in conceivable circumstances. So Republicans, I, Jeff Golden from Bedford Ashland area is, I think, big trouble. He's, it's anyone who remembers the wildfire in Bell City, Bell 762. The lines that were drawn by the Department of Forestry and throwing that was complete catastrophe. So, you know, who knows? He's running as the mayor of Memphis, police chief. So those two races and the Salem race really define what happens in the Senate. Regardless of which party ends up in control, it will be much closer. So there will not be super majorities that everyone, probably Democrats, probably use a couple, three seats in the House. At least two seats in the Senate, because they basically given away two seats on the coast in the county, Southern County. So it'll be a very different, very different polling. On top of that, 41 of the 90 members will not have served in a live in-person, person session. By the words, they got elected or appointed since the beginning of 2021. So, and we'll have at least 20, maybe 25 new members who never served before. So what that means is, you know, the learning curve is going to be very, very high for them. Fortunately, some of the candidates on both sides are very good. I've met with most of the candidates, there's some sharp people running. I think a lot of the people were expecting to win, have some background. Former county folks running, some city officials running, some people or state programs. So I don't think it's going to be, you know, all rookies, but it will be a very different place. And the last thing I'll say about this is add on top of that, the fact that Capitol is going to be largely, they say it's going to be open, but the entire basement's closed, the front and the back steps and the rotunda and the gallery are all closed for seismic construction. There is currently no route back and forth between the Senate and the House to get to the Senate or the House or the House. You know, go outside around the construction fences. They say that by the time we start in January for hearings, there'll be one hallway on the third floor between the Senate and House galleries. So you, you guys have all been in the building before, most of you haven't, because of the number of people in the building to fit into that one hallway. There would be 60% fewer bathrooms in the building. Is a lot of the bathrooms are in the middle of the building. No cafe, they're not planning for sort of coffee. So it's going to be a very, very different, different place. And I think that really is what leads into when I say this is an overall message, which is all the things that we tell our clients, they need to dig or even more important this session. Number one, we've got a, we need to establish and we'll establish a good partnership. This is not just an iris of being going off to Salem with Corey and coming back and telling you what's happening. Also, this is about us working together as a team. You know, say from our experience working COCOs during cities, I often hear things from, say, the public works directors, talk to the public works directors, who hear about a bill that's coming out before I heard about it. That's great. I think if you guys hear information that is important, that's not surprising. And given the number of bills, it's important that it's a two-way street. And that means that we have to, we'll be competing a lot, so probably tired of hearing us by the end of session. Second thing is.
We would never be tired.
Yeah, that's good. Hopefully not.
No.
Second thing is focus is our brand in a session like this. You know, really, since we have so many new members, we need to articulate a very clear vision of, you know, what it is that the county wants, what's our top priority, second priority, third priority. I like to say between three and five major priorities and that have things that you're going to support other, AOC, LOC. You know, the, the ag irrigator folks or, you know, public health might have, we can be supportive of that. But really try to focus. So when we go to our legislative delegation in Central Oregon, they all want to help. A biggie, Bruce Iris, her county, myself, Deschutes County, you know, Greg Smith, who I talked to yesterday, who's the vice chairman of the Ways and Means Committee. I told him, let me know, I can help. He comes to matters, but he doesn't come to Deschutes County, so.
Vicki's actually my rep.
Yes, yeah, I introduced this correctly.
Yes, so she does cover Deschutes.
Yeah, though, the benefit of that is all the legislators in Central Oregon, six, seven, or eight, however you want to calculate it, one of our allies. So, you know, we can help them, like, focus. Then two last things, we always stress collaboration, working with other entities. Does AOC have something we're supporting? How do we work with them? How would we support their efforts? What if another county has support of how can we be their partners? Echo or Gogo or other entities collaboration at some point. And then the last thing I'd say really quick and sort of nice was, I. Deschutes County is growing in importance. Population is growing. The cloud is growing. Either as Senate Minority Leader or Senate Co-President or potentially Senate President, Tim Knob is in a very advantageous position. They keep Iris sitting as the minority leader, being the minority leader, that's still an important position and a more narrowed legislative process. And I think people realize that Deschutes County is, is an important area of the state economically, tourism-wise. And I think people realize that Deschutes County is, is an important area of the state economically, tourism-wise. You're down the rest. So, and we've been a leader, you know, things like the homeless demonstration site is planned use. So, but I think there's an advantage and our voice can be very strong. So with that, I'm really, despite the fact that I haven't talked too much, I'm really here to listen and to learn what the department heads are seeing down the road, what things we should keep an eye on. Iris, I think it's pretty good notes and forward to discussion.
I know, I was just thinking about inflation and how impactful that's going to be. You know, how our gas prices have gone up, down, but Oregon have the biggest jump in the nation. And then it went down a little bit, so, yeah, no, food costs. Do you want to start? Do you want to wave? We'll start on you with Chris. And we will, we can work that way and hear from department heads and what you're thinking.
Probably the first thing we could do. But let's talk about it with regards to road officials, other works at these counties. We primarily funnel everything, all the conversations, advocacy, stuff like that through the county road program, AOC's county road program. We have an association, Oregon Engineers and Surveyors. And so in terms of that, that network, letting us know about bills, advocating for bills, you know, we're first and foremost kind of plugged into that, to that group. Good relationship there. It's a lot different than cities. I know, I mean, counties I've worked with, but cities are pretty, you know, they can go rogue. They've got loose associations, but they're off doing their own things. They compete against each other a lot. County road officials, super tight. And so we're always, you know, so there's just a stronger advocacy and it's funded. You know, you know, in terms of counties' infrastructure at, at the AOC, it's funded with a off-the-top contribution from a federal funding program that filters through. In this upcoming session, I should say, most of the time we play defense. And, you know, we're always, you know, bending off things that will try to chip away at things we like. This time, we are going to play a little bit of offense, probably. And the biggest thing is kind of a bill that's meant to kind of slap ODOT on the wrist a little bit. They are doing away with a program called Fund Exchange. To a lot of us, Fund Exchange is the best thing ODOT's ever done. ODOT gets a, through the federal government, an allocation of surface transportation block grant funds annually, SGBG. And these, they've done this Fund Exchange program whereby instead of giving local government, cities and counties and small NPOs and, you know, large NPOs, that's giving us federal dollars, just, you know, thank you, federal government, here's federal dollars, local government. They filter it through ODOT's books. Basically, they are well-equipped to spend federal money. They do it all over the place. Local agencies aren't, it's the hardest thing to do. You got to comply with all the federal requirements. We are not even certified as an agency to spend it. We have to hire ODOT to oversee, you know, provide oversight over any federal project we spend. So what ODOT does, they take the federal money and they filter it through their programs. And then they hand us fresh, clean, washed state dollars, which is what we get on a monthly basis through the state highway fund. And we can spend those as, as we do without all that, that federal red tape. Especially when you're dealing with, you know, smaller amounts, you know, some cities will get a hundred thousand dollars, which is silly, you know, if it's federal, but great if it's not. What ODOT is telling local governments now is that we don't want to do Fund Exchange anymore. We want to cut it in half, but we'll likely get rid of it here in a couple cycles. And the reason is they, they always wash that money through their operations and maintenance side. And that, so they'll, they'll take the federal dollars, just spend them in their office maintenance side, give us state dollars out of that. But meanwhile, House Bill 2017 just passed five years ago. Tons of state dollars coming in, over quarter of a billion dollars coming into ODOT. And that they should have capacity to fund exchange that. But they're telling us they don't. The reason is, they, they point back to House Bill 2017. Look, it is so legislatively directed to certain programs and this and that. We can't fund exchange out of there. So we've got to do that off the maintenance. Though, by the way, we have a $700 million deficit in the next five years. To off the maintenance, because legislature is not giving us any money for off the maintenance. So we're throwing the challenge flag. We don't think they're being creative enough internally. We think they could do it today if they wanted to. But second to that is we could jump back into House Bill 2017, just like it's been done at every session since it's passed with a modification. Change a few words and, you know, allow that Fund Exchange capacity to occur within that, those new state dollars or, or the other billion dollars they get annually and to exchange what amounts to $40 million in federal funds. So that's kind of a bill that, that we're crafting through the county road program, AOC. We've been a part of the legislative committee, four members. You may have heard about this, but that's what Fund Exchange is. And like I said, it's the best thing they've ever done. They want to take it away. And we're not, you know, we, we think there's a, there's an happening for it to be successful. But that, I mean, and it's a win-win. ODOT, if we all get federal dollars as counties and, you know, forty, fifty cities, we have to hire ODOT to spend it for us. ODOT doesn't have people to, to deliver these programs, especially, you know, with how hard it is to hire people. And so that's what makes it extra frustrating. So we're going to craft a pledge concept, work it through. And that's just something to be aware of, eyes and ears.
Yep, it's good. How much is the Fund Exchange total?
So it's $40 million annually that ODOT then shares with small NPOs, counties and cities.
Do you know who's drafting the bill for it?
I, we, we do have one as a placeholder. I, I can't tell you off the top of my head. That will be the House Joint Committee on Transportation, co-chair Susan McLean is still there, but Lee Byer to the OTC and is leaving a seat at the end of the year is gone, gone. So it needs to be seen in the Senate Joint Committee on Transportation Chair, or whether or not there will be a joint committee. There might be a Senate Committee on Transportation, a House Committee on Transportation, like there used to be. Right? So it could be split. So if you don't know, Mallory Roberts. Second bill, and this is one that we've, we've tried numerous times, but we're kind of starting to figure it out. Counties are prohibited from collecting any sort of revenue from utilities. Very much unlike cities that have franchise agreements. Counties don't have the ability to do that, strictly prohibited in statute. We're not asking for the ability to do franchise agreements. What we want is fee recovery, so that when utilities come, use county rights away. We have to, you know, process plans, inspect, you know, kind of continue to monitor over the years, so to speak. We want to have fee recovery in the way of just, you know, plan permit fee recovery. Utilities hate any thought of this, any thought of counties, you know, even dipping their toe in what is sacred ground, because they, they get battered in the cities, the franchise fees, all that stuff. The counties, they've got a free pass. There are utilities that are coming through the state that use county roads and they're connecting data centers in California to data centers in Washington. And, you know, we finally think we have the, the talking point to sway a few people. So Deschutes County is having to expand resources to process permits, go out and inspect all the, the work that's taking place as these broadband companies and others, you know, kind of go through and they like county roads because they're lower traffic, a lot easier, you know, don't have the, utilities occupied the right of way already. And so utilities that don't even provide a service to Deschutes County residents directly are getting a free pass anyway. So we're, we're going to take another run at it. It's, I don't anticipate it being successful, but we've got a better, better way to describe, you know, a real issue that's causing us, you know, you know, blame the, you know, back end room is, are these outstate utilities that are just driving through. Just want the ability to, to do fee recovery up to, up to full discretion, so something like that. Other than that, we've got your normal defensive bills, I think you're probably aware of. Probably, you know, there's, there's a tax on SDCs, especially in the, in this environment. There've been work groups that have been assembled to kind of frame the issue in the last few years. There's just a whole host of other little things, you know, that could crop up that we've seen before. The one, five percent for bike ped, is another one that, that we have our eyes on. Currently, it's that story, it's one percent. This would, this would go to five. It doesn't sound like a lot, but it can be, yeah. There's several, so. So that's, that's road stuff.
I was just going to say, I tried to get in through Connect Oregon funding for Burlington Northern and Plymouth County. Bill, Chris's bill, it needed a couple million dollars. I think we have like a hundred eighty family wage jobs there now. And if you could find out if that's, if there's, if that's happened, it didn't, it was below the line. I didn't get it funded, but it was taking six hundred freight trucks on the Highway 97. And I think they were asking for like two point three or five million, something like that. And I would really hope that we could do that, because you, when you drive 97, you know how we need to get those trucks out. And the mill seems to be doing, you know, great work and a lot of people that live in Deschutes County work there. So, I just don't know what happened.
Yeah. So it's been a great for central Oregon for a lot of airports and railway.
Well, we got, we got the Bend Airport Tower funded, but I still needed, I thought that was a really great bill and there's a whole story there. So I really, I'm still thinking that needs to be done.
Okay, sure. On the SDC, just really quick, I was on the, I was told this morning, the SDC coalition. So we've divided up legislators to talk to about SDCs. The bottom line is, if a city or a county cannot recoup their infrastructure costs or is, you know, pays for it. So the existing constituents or citizens in the city or the county and, and seen, most of them have seen this. So I did have a conversation with John Lively, who's kind of in spearheading the SDC effort. And he's a former mayor, he's mayor of Springfield, years ago. Said, oh, Mr. John, you know, if you want to, you want to take money away from local governments for something, we have to do it. And he invited a placement. Funding source. It will be, it'll definitely be a discussion. Yeah, so as far as counties go, we have an SDC, I think seven other counties have transportation assistance, a couple up parts. No county has utilities, but we get invited to the party. You know, with the cities that, yeah. The growth is expensive and we got to find a way to pay for it as some amount, just a better way. That's great. It'll be a big issue.
So what is that SDC tax scenario? What is that? And so somebody, somebody builds a house, costs forty-eight, whatever, done for SDC, who's going to tax it? For what?
So not, so some of the, some of the concepts have been things that we actually already do, but would be required for all counties or anyone in charge of SDC. That's where you collect it. The builders want it, occupancy is way late in the process as you can, or even when you sell the house. You know, I mean, they're, they're looking for ways to, you know, push it downstream. We already collected that occupancy. But to a smaller local government that, that can't, you know, that basically has a hard time tracking occupancy and that, and that sort of thing. It's, sometimes it's hard to get them back into the counter to pay a big bill when they're fighting refrigerators and getting ready to move in, right? So that's been one concept. Others, you know, I'm not sure what blood might be in the water on that and how it may affect us. But the mechanism, you know, is, is always being looked at to adjust it, to make it softer or more favorable. The big, big issue has been, is it a one-size-fits-all, it's going to tell every county, every city how to do it. That's been, I think, the angst with a lot of local.
I just thought you said tax on SDCs.
A tax.
That's why I was asking. Okay, I got it. I understand the context.
Okay. Yep. So. Christine. I'm done.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. Now we go to Christine.
We'll meet again in a month after all that.
So until recently, I was on the board of the Oregon Property Managers Association. We're still in the group, we're in the association. We're an associate of AOC. And our group has been interested over at least the last two years. There's been a bill that's died, under it's going to pop up again, that would basically change the allocation of tax for closed revenue. And so we're really interested in that for many reasons, but one of them would be, was just a whole financial nightmare to manage it, how the bill's been presented. So we, we, you know, we're watching, we would watch that. And of course, you know, work with our commissioners to do for the best interest of the county. Makes sense, but the other thing I think I'm interested in is because I'm in a support role, is anything to do with housing. A lot of our property management goals are related to our fisher holes, which is a lot of that. And ways that we can do things to help with housing. Oh, I have to say, that was quick. And Sarah actually joined us and I see Kathleen up there. So, do you guys want to introduce yourselves at this moment? Thank you, Sarah.
Hi, I can introduce myself. I'm Sarah Crosswhite from Deschutes County and I'm a one, I'm the director. Did you want me to go on?
Well, if you want to right now, sure, why not?
I could. Okay, so we have, for us, we have the APCO Legislative Committee and we have somebody from Government Relations Strategies that works with that committee, and that's for all nine-one-one centers for Oregon. So what she'll typically do is put together all the bills that may affect our nine-one-one centers in Oregon, anything that may be coming up. I haven't seen anything from her recently. She stays on top of everything and then lets us know what may be of a concern. I think the one thing that may come back up this year, we had a bill, I forget the number, but it was for PERS. And that was a request for the telecommunications to be able to retire at twenty-five years, like police and fire. That's been a big deal for the last several years and I, I think it's going to just keep coming back up. Right now, they could retire at twenty-five years, but that's going to be with a hit, a percentage hit. And so I think that's the one that I know of that may be a big deal that comes back around, but I'm not aware of any others at this point.
Thanks. Yeah, nine-one-one has been an issue over the years in Salem. The race, flexibility for counties, local governments, et cetera, so.
Well, staffing right now for public safety, you know, this is nine-one-one floor, but we're seeing that also in just our, like our rural fire protection district, we're behind fire, they're just understaffed, so that, you know, that's not counting, but I'm just acknowledging that. You know, it's all over the place, but public safety, twenty-four-hour operation type facilities gets pretty critical when you're always down a few people, people required to be retired.
So Sarah, how is your number right now? And are you down from the thousand calls?
So, yeah, we're down from the thousand calls. So actually, the change in weather for fall has been a little bit nice. Our staffing number, we are still at eleven vacancies. And we have a retirement that was just announced for December and a couple other people that have applied elsewhere. So it's pretty rough. We're having challenging times right now.
Before we get too far past property, I, I did want to, I did want to mention, I'm not aware of proposals, legislative proposals of allocation of tax for closed revenue that Christine was mentioning. But one thing that I became aware of last year was that Multnomah County has the flexibility to take the tax for closed property revenue, revenue that they're receiving and invest that into projects that address housing insecurity. And so what I heard was that, that that's as simple as in statute right now, it says a county over six hundred thousand people is allowed to do that. And if we drop that down to two hundred thousand people, then we, we would have the option to do that as well. I talked to a number of, the other taxing districts, school districts, cities about this. And, you know, the city men, you know, kind of strike their shoulders and says, yeah, like, but getting that twenty thousand, fifty thousand dollar check is great, but can't like do anything that if you kept that in a larger pool and used it to, on projects that address housing insecurity, it'd have a greater impact. The school district said, you know, when we receive that money, we just have to send it to the common school fund anyway. And then we only get a fraction of it back. So if you want to keep the money, all the money here locally and apply it directly towards our housing needs, that, that they thought that was actually good. So that's, you know, if, if somebody else is already opening up this can of worms of Kid tax for close property revenue, you know, I would want to push for us to be able to. That have that opportunity.
Well, this is where we can practice, you know, the will of the board years, because I'm not supportive of that concept at all, so. Uh you know, it's a concept, but uh you know, some of these policy decisions will be decided by the board giving you directions. And let's make sure we have open and honest communication about this thing, but yeah, I wouldn't be supportive of that.
If we could talk about.
Thank you very much. Okay, Kathleen, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, thank you. Uh my name's Kathleen Hinman, I'm the HR Director here. Um just to, I guess, a couple of things, I mean, clearly. There's a whole, well, there's been a lot around compensation and employment um the past couple sessions, and so we continue to kind of look at that. Um you know, specifically around the compensation, the um Oregon Pay Equity Act and and as pieces come forward, other legislation, like we saw with House Bill four oh four. Where um we have to kind of keep that in mind as we start looking at all of these different types of um sort of employment or compensation. Uh issues or other bills that come forward, so you know, kind of watching that closely is something that we tend to do right now. Um anything regarding organized labor, we've got seven different, uh well, we have seven different employee groups, six different unions here, so lots to watch. Um and we do tend to see, you know, Sarah mentioned, and I anticipate seeing it again, the um, you know, the request from the nine one one associations to be considered. Um PERS eligible at twenty five years. We saw that same thing with our deputy district attorneys, not ours, but the state's. And um so we're, we're, I anticipate that those kind of continuing to come up. Um and then there'd been a a little bit around some law enforcement. Oh, some details on on how due process was applied there, so I'm curious to see if those resurface uh this year or not. I I think as you're aware, we have a um self insured benefit plan that, and we have a pharmacy pharmacy that we run as well. So we we do tend to watch um legislation around that um in uh human resources, which isn't necessarily typical of of all. Um HR functions. Um and then, you know, the biggest thing that we're looking at is the Oregon paid. Um leave and kind of watching um what goes on there, they're still um finalizing rulemaking around that. I mean, I think it's pretty final, they're starting, they're implementing and and putting out procedures um and information for uh employers. Um so we just continue to watch that as that comes out.
Kathleen, I'll just make a couple of comments. First of all, the Pay Equity Act is uh front center in everyone's mind. Uh it it went into effect in September, except for monies in House Bill four thousand four, and they got an extension through the end of the year. But there are an awful lot of entities, including police and fire, who are saying, hey, this is gonna prevent us from losing people in the first place. We're gonna lose people who go elsewhere, out of state, because they can get a bonus or or uh, you know, added retention bonuses uh as time goes by. And then it's gonna also hurt a lot of the behavioral health, and I also work with a lot of nonprofits in being able to attract uh employees from out of state to come here. People do tend to wanna come to Oregon, because it's a beautiful place, but if you're also getting the ten thousand dollars or the pay retention, they might go elsewhere, so. Lots of discussion about that. And the second thing is, you're right, I do know a little bit about self insurance near pharmacy, because my wife works for David's Benefits Planning. So I've heard of, you know, little bits and pieces, not a healthcare expert, but uh she says to say hello.
Yeah.
So I never heard of self insurance and and running your own pharmacy until uh she started talking about a few years ago. So now we know.
Thanks.
Great, thank you so much. Um. Jeff, do you have your sound? Is the sound working now? Do you wanna take it over?
Yeah, hopefully everyone can hear me. Um. So fairs, Oregon fairs are paying attention to a couple of of items for this year. Um anticipating that we'll see the return of some animal rights bills that would be disastrous to the ability for fairs to operate and do. Um what it is that we're, what's at our core is the the ag education program last year, that bill was HB three thousand eight. Um by Representative Rob Nos, it didn't make it to committee, but um likely something like that could come back around. Um in this year or future cycles, so something that Oregon Fairs Association or um group that we're part of certainly tracks. Then the other one um that we're likely to bring forward, uh or that OFA is working to bring forward would be a funding bill. Um that would probably look to me or HB thirty one seventy three from last cycle. Um fairs receive a portion of lottery funding that's been capped at uh a set amount for a significant amount of times. The bill would would trade a reduction in the um, the percentage of funding received in exchange for cap relief. So that that cap would be removed to allow for an increase of the funding for fairs uh across the, across the state, all thirty four, thirty four county fairs and the state fair would benefit from it. Doesn't necessarily have this, I mean, it certainly benefits Dushuts County, because the funding would increase, it's less important for us, right? Our county made a significant investment into the property twenty three years ago, and we have the nicest property. Well, I think anywhere but in the Northwest for sure, but many of our partner fairs um in in other counties, if in the Jefferson or Kirk County, that's more representative of what fairs across the state look like. And fairs play an important role in emergency response, and we saw that over the last several years. Um with fire uh and response, COVID response and other activities. And so some of the fairs are literally unable to provide that service to their communities because their, their buildings are not safe to occupy. So this would provide some level of increasing funding to those fairs to be able to support their operations, so. Um it looks like that'll come back around and I think it likely will be a bill um presented by Representative Lively, I believe, is what. Um it looks like at this point.
I have, you know, we were having some discussion about this bill at AOC. And uh my one concern is, who is lottery in buying your ticket? You know, already just getting up. Us, you know, our fingerprints is in very good shape. You know, diversity of money sources as well as. Eastern half of the revenue. So I appreciate that other. On the greater needs, but um I mean, if you're taking money away from schools, if you're taking money away from. You know, you know, developed, if you're taking money away from uh, you know, things that we care about, and I I I'm not sure if that's a a trade off that we should be supporting.
Okay, well, I was at the Lake County Fairgrounds. Where a funeral service not too long ago, and they definitely could use the fun day for your. You know. I mean, they don't have the population, but I, you know, I see the need there because it is a community gathering center for. Or like. And I know they probably used to during their fires. Anyway, um Lee Randall. I see you up in the right corner.
Uh, good afternoon, uh Lee Randall in Facilities. Uh similar to the road department, we often play defense. Uh on uh bills, especially related to uh proposed changes in procurement or contracting statutes. And then second area that uh we'll be interested in, uh we are currently in project development for the courthouse expansion. We have a general contractor on board and a design team, you know, owner's rep. And so uh any conversations around uh courthouse funding, we'd certainly be interested in. Um those are really the the two main areas that uh would be, uh we'd especially be paying attention to this year.
Lee, just a quick question, as I saw this uh occur in Clackamas County, how was inflation playing into your earlier calculations, the cost of that expansion?
Uh it's it's proved very challenging, and so uh we're, we're actually are scheduled to uh meet with uh commissioners. Um in the next, I believe, a a week or so from now, a week and a half, uh to provide some updates. Our team is currently working through our latest estimates based on uh the programming, the results of the programming phase. And so um yeah, we've experienced the same uh price increases that construction uh projects have seen statewide. Um and we we have uh, you know, a number of other construction projects that are currently underway or in process. Um and uh those price increases are affecting those projects as well.
The reason I ask is I had conversations with a number of let's say there's about understand, recognizing that that's a problem. So, you know, when they have allocated funding for projects in the last two or three years, and now we're finding, if the money that they allocate is not sufficient to actually complete the project, there's talk about, is there an adjustment? That could be made. I mean, the state has three point five, three billion dollars reserves. Uh they have, they have extra bonding capacity. So what can the state do to be a good partner with county, cities, uh infrastructure? They're facing the same thing with. House Bill twenty seventeen and the and the road issues, I mean, the Aberdeen Bridge uh cost over the two oh five, uh bridge has gone up by thirty percent since the initial estimates. And they think they can adjust the tolling uh to be able to do that, but that's proving to be very unpopular for the people that live in West End. In Clackamas County, I guess we go. So uh, you know, it, I think the legislature might take a look at infrastructure and inflation and. See if there is some kind of overall mechanism, because it's not just the Dushuts County courthouse. While you're on that, our partnership project with ODOT, it's House Bill twenty seven, the project, Tara Bond, same concern. Uh thirty million dollars budgeted, potentially forty million dollar price tag. Um we're providing ten of that, so we're tapped out. Um so we'd love the state to um recognize that.
Okay, let's, yeah, do.
No.
I'm just for support.
Yeah.
Well, I thought maybe I know, something might not, well, representing Peter, you so much.
Yeah, 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 Peter Katski today. So of course, CDB, you know, we're building environmental soil, it's the onsite program. So any bills related. Just us, there's no bills that would crack me at this time, and most of our initiatives is focused, we've already had AOC, so. Of course, I've always related commissioner roles. Um so things that were kind of continued in the past year, it was a case out of Clackamas, I mean, the short term. In the EFU zone. There'll be a bigger property in the EFU zone, that's not the. In that zone, let's conduct its own occupation or better practice on that. Uh that's what it's. And also the commissioner's interest in the past year, dealing with uh a recreational, you know, one that's in fact the home parks. Uh what we bind ourselves up against there is a big wall. So I participated in the past year, even if it had infection, working through. And uh they shared frustrations that it's out of resource and it's RV parks and infection home parks. Uh there's economic incentives to the huge system, the cost, the particular. And these are frequently housing class for sort of people. And there's some people out there who are parked out on metal lands, on public lands, who, like, there you could survive, hey, hook up the, they're just those facilities. So to the extent that there's uh bills, it's something, it's somewhere either use or find work brands to go fourteen.
And I do have Senator Knoke, he wrote up a bill for a private project for these seven acres of a manufactured, single wide manufactured park. Um just a bit north of Ben's huge field line. So there, you know, we haven't had one, but it's, it's over three hundred single wides, it could, couldn't really be affordable housing. For people that work in Dushuts County, everyone tells me, you know, they, they might, they their workers got kind of isolated.
Right.
Right, yeah, they're, they're leaving here, so anyway.
Well, Martinez organization, yes, and uh so we've got existing developments in rural manufactured home parks. And you are in spots where they're hesitant to do anything, because it triggers something. And it just, they they can't, they can't even start talking about improving existing facilities, possibly growing just a little bit or whatever. And and that's what we learned when we studied the problem, that, well, if I touch this, it could be, but it receptive system or uh, you know, fire turnaround for a uh. Fire truck or water flow, you know, I mean, and not that any that bad, but that means they just stop. They just don't even try, which is like, ah, is that what we intend that to?
Yeah, I, I mean. The problem. Could be perceived as regulatory, but you know, basically. To to establish an RV bar. That people that are saying that you without. Basically, if it was actually cost rather than a matter of like what you're allowed to do. If you're allowed to do something, it's just they'll be very expensive. That's expensive for you, then, yeah, I think it's a, it's, it's an issue of subsidy and investment first issue of education. If you. I I think it's important for us to be able to. Um. Uh get from that perspective, you know, that that to 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 really understand whether it is regulatory. Just requiring people to do what they need. Arning people do things in order to have a a city. Um is is cost, I forget again, um that requires a different kind of policies.
And Peter and I had met with the owners of Green Acres, it's older, manufactured home park by Redmond, and they had some additional property. We, you know, looked at it, tried, because we were trying to expand the capacity of portable housing here. And couldn't figure out a way to do something for that, for that property owner. So, you know, looking at all the different things, uh it's, it's really unfortunate because that is portable housing.
Yeah, plus a lot of manufactured home parks in the state, launched twenty five years, there have been a couple of efforts to bolster that show or. Stability, I guess. One was a bill that was passed a few years ago to allow the. And it's to buy the parks, I think one of the ones. Uh like once, we're the RV issue really quickly, uh I think I mentioned this, but there is a, it's the county dealing with the abandoned RV issue outside of GB. So the city.
It's a lot more expensive over in like Hope County, I remember, where they have to pay like thousands of dollars to get it moved out. And we, we're cleaning up a China hat all the time, but you know, um community volunteers are cleaning up too. And uh what, they're in them, they're in the China hat now four miles, so it it's gonna be really big at some point in time.
Yeah, 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 there is a word, uh I've been participating in it, so, you know, a lot of counties, several counties are on it.
Right.
Uh cities, counties, uh it started with the tow truck owners association, because in a lot of places, they're being called by city or county or police agency, police, church, fire. Move over and out RV or one that is totally not inhabitable, but there's no way to dispose of them, having a very good cycle. Tracked, so, so the question, the question to people, number one, how do you determine that it's actually unoccupied? So you don't wanna tell one that someone's moving in, living in, because they'll just go someplace else and. So, or how do you move a safe route? That's the question. Second is, how do you pay for this? That's really the sticky wicked. No one wants to pay tax, they buy a new RV or a P. Uh but yeah, cities and the counties, police, the fire, having parks, especially the parks are really a big participant in this center. So it's a three to four thousand dollar expense for a lot of.
There is, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of dumping. You know, you know. Unauthorized tunnels, can't manage for people being trapped. There are, there are people who see the unauthorized can, it's like, oh, you know, there are people dumping out there, I'm just. Go, I'm like, check my uh old dishwasher out there, because, you know, like, it'll just blend in. Yes, instead of going and paying my typical fees, but uh there are, um I mean, there are abandoned vehicles, I mean, seem like a lot of homes. It's car, it's truck, it's pickup truck, but it's not necessarily. So maybe it's just not as much of an issue for us, it's not as, you compare to the volume for other kinds of of um. Waste that people are dumping.
Now, interestingly, I have some interface, BLM, some of the issues that they deal with, it's some of these. Yes, um you know, you get. Using meth and, or using needle drugs, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of emphasis on setting all of yours out or. These types of issues. At BLM and Oregon Department of Forest Street, US Department of Forest. At B L M and Oregon Department of Forests, U S Department of Forests, we're all table board group. So, so there will be a bill.
Congressman Betts has actually met with the head of the U S Forest Service last week. And because of China hat and the issues that is only getting bigger, and I believe that. He's made a commitment to come out here. It's taken a couple of years.
A circle back. Really, actually, there is going to be a lot of focus. For the house. And, you know, what can be done to to uh facilitate or. A bills. Um, I I hope that we can. Make the manufacturer home parks. Modernized. All that, all that regulatory experience and it's making. The economics of it and the subsidy. I I feel like. A lot of. A lot of the legislators represent people who have vast majority of the population. The Oregon is is the city. So, um. O- oftentimes, you know, urban legislators, they don't think of. Actually, our part as a portable house. The multifamily apartment. Um, which is. But, um. Yeah, there's, there is a need. Be elevated. Uh, it's, you know, I was heavily involved in this issue about eight years ago. Uh, there was a big emphasis on manufacturing home parks. There were two, uh. All housing advocates were involved, cities were at the table. Uh, I guess cities were seeing them disappearing and, you know, the people tend to live in manufactured. Homes, single flats, other like or low income. Uh, seniors. And so what happens when someone who's a senior loses their single wide? Uh, where you go, a lot of veterans, five percent of veterans. So I think there is a real interest in trying to be creative. And giving local communities the tools uh to craft the ordinances to make the most sense for them rather than. That is a large part of the problem, what we have to say is it's. What, that's why we're just one community does always work. So give, give your local elected officials, build them to make decisions. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yes. Especially when you have the ground that you shoots county has.
Good, good, the investments. You know, there's a lot of. Spreads, you can various. Centers. Yes, you can use those for all. So I think there is a, it really is, like lived, maybe a lot of. A lot of. The reason why being seen more. That was something that came out of. And there've been some efforts, speakers, some things, uh, manufacturing home parks to be provided within U T P. That they had a word. Struggle, it's something really incentivizes city to approach it as well as a developer to develop it. It starts to be around a hundred units, structures. And unlike single family homes, which create a cash explosion, soon Michelle already. He's paid out over decades. So they are both getting a regulatory. A city, city buying as well as a developer itself. The advantage of having a city, of course, is the kind of infrastructure you've got. Uh, state group called Casa, Casa, the kids program, but. Community children advocates Casa, uh, City Casa, they they've been kind of leader on this for. Right, you know, so at some point. I channel with them to connect.
Okay, transition, just it sounds like our folks on Zoom are having a little bit of trouble hearing folks off the table, so if we can um try to hurt back, that would be great. Okay.
Be louder.
Yeah, well, I, do you have anything else you want to add?
Nothing else. As I said at the outset, our goals are three, the point are always the commissioner's goal, so please. We'd be glad to hear it.
Oh, is it possible to divorce seven sixty two from three ninety one? I've asked Senator Finley that several times, because I knew that was going to be a problem. And, you know, the ADUs, we have someone with kids that you can do ADUs, you know, you can just go and order it and. The Ben Chamber did an excellent uh promotion of educating the public about ADUs in the city event. And I just wondered, is that at all a possibility? Would that be more problems than it would be worth?
Uh, I haven't heard anyone suggest aborting this too, but I've heard a lot of talk about Senator seven sixty two. So. Fourth Street Department had to pull back the lines after the outcry. That's impacting it, Senate racer two. So.
On the right, Senator Goldin.
Yeah, so I think there'll be a lot of, a lot of discussion, seven sixty two. Uh, but I don't know about whether or not. Fire hazard lines, so it could be, it is top of the.
Okay, well, I just, it just seems so unfortunate, you know, testified for it for three years. It gets passed, but they put it with seven sixty two and then I thought, oh, this is going to be a problem and it's Oregon and it's a problem. And we could, we um have probably up to eight thousand. Uh, ADUs could be built and some of them are already here illegal, so they could be made legal, a few of them.
We definitely see constituents. On the face, so let's send a sympathy, who says about. That's why spaced uh. Based on higher extreme balance, seven sixty two, or if not higher extreme amount, they can, you don't have to meet those requirements. That's something that we hope was existing legislation, but it's not. Was a provision that would say, well, look, you know, if we don't know what the maps are. If you want to move ahead, just pardon, you know, you're going to be right in either case, yes, possibly. Right, it seems like it would be relatively controversial to say, hey, when you meet the standard. If you were subject to hazard. Like, there's going to be a duty of overarching against the fire hazard, at least less. Good. That's more of a patch than. Right. That seems like a.
Just a separation.
Yeah.
I'm a.
This is how I'm being secured, because having been involved in this for three years. Everybody's highly aware of this specific issue and given this low any proof. Housing in a. Significant portion. Uh, everybody gets it and no, and and so when I was one of the. People working on this two plus years ago, we talked about exactly what Bill said, let's just make it as most as possible. To do this until some time we can figure out the state's wildfire mitigation plan, everybody. Pulled that back, said, no, 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 we can figure it out now. So they connected it at the very end of the legislative session to seven six, seven bill, seven sixty two. Nobody anticipated the seven sixty two would. Literally, yeah.
So.
And summer, then and then consequently, the lighting is for a variable.
Yeah. Uh, it it it's a really unfortunate outcome of that, in my end, commissioner, there's our, we have. They're they're here for the computer, help legalize those ones that can be. So it's uh, it's a, it fits in with all the help. It's doing, guys, a lot of these issues, the variety of grids are all.
They are linked, they, yeah, they're all linked to, we just. Yes. Great.
So two things, uh, maybe not legislative, uh, specific bills, but topics that they. So your water, you know, so we've uh had an application for a rezon of seven hundred and ten acres all over. Uh, you know, kind of a political issue, push and pull on that, so possibly seventy one domestic example wells. Uh, but uh, just clarity for more water resources about, and we're working through our comprehensive plan at the shoots county. You know, what? What, is there a reference point for, you know, how much development, is too much development or. Gauge for what we should be doing, or, you know, just some good leadership and partnership for more of the water resources to our point. And obvious, black and white, simple terms, so people can understand it in the community. So that's the problem, like, well, according to this, according to that, you know, the water rights, this and that, and then somebody just spins it in the community and we're like, okay. Half the information is correct and water is not human. Yeah, there you go. So, yeah, so that's the thing, that if you get that worked out for us, please do. Uh, but just, just, we're always engaged in that, so that's just bringing that topic up. Uh, and, you know, I've been advocate for agricultural, uh, you know, big decisions there, you know, it's Western Water Law on top of the, you know. Habitat Conservation Plan at the federal level and water allocation, so we know it's a lot of that issue there, so. But if we're not wells for. Any of those things get.
And the exempt well apparently is allowed fifteen thousand gallons a day, but for the average home, they use what, four hundred and fifty? And then if they're irrigating to have an acre, that goes up to fifteen hundred. So the the range is really amazing. Water is our gold. And, um, but, uh, I believe Representative Owens has thirty bills that he's dropped. He is, you know, the water, it's where the hay farmer from the crane, so whatever we can do, whatever seems to make sense. I was really disappointed last year that nothing got, really got through, I believe. And I think that, oh my gosh, it's about time, we've got, something's got to happen.
You know, it's, as you all know, we've had a pretty collaborative uh process on water conservation and mitigation and. You know, the shoots restoration, but the A C P has their own, you know, some big challenges in. Uh, you know, a lot of communities, I'm sure, I think I, you guys talked about, you know, illegal use of water outside the U G B for a lot of farms, etc. It's been initially a lot of counties are facing that kind of deal with that. And I think I mentioned at the uh, to all of you. The Coco is working with the irrigation districts, agricultural people on a, a juniper thinning. Uh, riparian zone restoration, stream flow restoration, conservation uh bill. Uh, Representative Owens is very excited about that, is is representative helm. Uh, because all the O S U studies, the national study, western studies, the B L M studies all say the same thing, which is the excess growth of juniper, not the historical levels, but. A thousand percent increase in junipers, that's based on like the. Basically, the watering of both the shallow groundwater and also a lot of the small streams and. They evolve the habitat, so city grounds have it, have to. So the water will be a big issue. Uh, there hasn't been a water committee in the house that can't help us, the chair of, been folded back into the A committee, but I thought. Thinks that they'll probably have a reactive subcommittee for the recreational water, but either white water is going to be a big issue.
Does his race look like it went again?
No.
No, I mean, because I've been working with him on, yeah, those kind of issues.
And he is raised with the primary. Just worried about primary.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. It just seems like, you know, the juniper, I just can't believe them. They've just taken over and I mean, we really, you've slanted people. And you pull the juniper that's like that tall, but the root is like that, you know, you you get it. That it's, they're taking over.
It is. No one, no one thinks that juniper problem is a problem for. But for the shoots county. The 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 water angle is not as strong because. Though, just go over into the. You do some. In springs. Exposed return for first streams. You know, it's not the, it's not the primary reason to do something about. Yeah, and I think the the group that's been working on this probably agrees, but it's a, there are areas in the shoots county where it's impacting. Drift areas, right current zone, so it. What the key with this bill is going to be, let's target the areas where we can have a impact. Probably that's mostly Kirk County, right, and Jefferson County, Jefferson County farm, so I'm telling you, once or leave. It's some progress, but there are probably a couple, a few areas of shoots county.
Uh, Mackenzie King, definitely that.
Yeah. Want to get, right, plus the Y two screen. Yeah. That's good. Which is a good example of the the progress we've made. Restoration of the whole area.
So we'll be celebrating a state land use system fifty years next year, say, no more hundred, right, and then. Conversation starting to happen, uh, there's a lot of references. History, uh, to shoot county commissioners pointing out to governors and. How the common development, Barbara Roberts, like, hey, you know, it's really great we got the system, but maybe there's something. Could have been different up here. Uh, we have some, some parcels that were zone resource land. How, probably just the catchall at the time, because we didn't do a lot more analysis. So there's some privately owned land out there that, you know, might have benefited from a big book, which is what been told years ago or something. And, you know, we're so proud of ourselves for stopping. Stopping or whatever, but, you know, we've got housing issues, so maybe there's something to go, so I'm just, you know, sharing some of the words I would use around that. It starts to resonate with legislature, that's still. And we'll have our discussion, because there's different opinions here.
Yeah, I think, you know, there, the common theme cross party lines, nice, Dr. Julie Bay, you know, correct. Jake Springfield, so this has been the housing chair, it is now the seventh house, which we're in here. She acknowledged it, it's time to see, can we allow a little more flexibility? For instance, the bio projects. At the end of Ben Redmond's penalty. Is there an opportunity to use a stamp like that, so I could be easy to. Redmond, put their R P out for master belt, and no one's been on it. Um, so challenges remain, but is there, is there a way to make the system a little more flexible? A little less time consuming, because by the time you get through with all the processes, some. We're in the elderly. Uh, so what are the opportunities? We're going to.
It's the demand.
It'll come back, that's certain. There's. One, one more real specific thing. The rural land use. Is. Weeks to hospital. Six, first shelter site. Uh, and we have. Certain Oregon villagers, they have this little circle of land. In between two churches who are both open to um hosting. A little bit of seed. Right outside the Ben U G B, right outside the Ben U G B. And, uh, you know, they 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 kind of, the the two churches said, well, what about using the land right in between? Um, and the landlord is is open to it, but it's it's yet to use it. So. If we could, uh, you know. Still two thousand and six, allowing. Signing shelter site. In, within uh incorporated cities. So you could get that tweet to say, hey, how about within a mile of the U G B and the city as well, regardless of zoning? Um, I I think it could really open up spaces for us.
Great, Janice. Well, you are done.
You don't have any issues, you, Janice?
Okay, so, uh, we work with, I think. Think, uh, and the. Storm station there is, which is also. No?
Different.
Yeah.
Same.
Probably, first things, it's hard to pick a new name, we were Northwest Grassroots Communications for twenty years, I decided to change the name, all the next one is what else had, so. So.
I think it's like one word.
Probably, I think, uh, it is, uh.
Northwest.
At, uh.
Associates.
It's Phil Donovan, Laura Curtis, I don't, yeah, I don't. Amanda, I don't.
Yeah, I was curious.
Yeah, Northwest Public Affairs.
Affairs, right, great. Okay. So, um, we met this morning for our first legislative typically for all things I D T. Behavioral health, we're working with A C and H P and Northern Public Affairs, and that talk works pretty closely. With uh, Clo for all legislation. Public health, I think we're going to continue that. Right? So in terms of behavioral health, uh, there were just two bills highlighted. One is a revamp of the. Workflow model itself. Average of the model that sort of costs out, what is it required to. And then there's a a policy option.
Right, maybe.
Right. For behavioral health, there are literally. For behavioral health, there are literally twelve. Gonna try to sort of. There's a, there's a legislative concept to extend and expand. That's something. Where. We are a county that has a C C H C.
Gotta find.
Yeah. And there is a.
Yes, good question. Is your C C V just the, uh, working with Jose?
We work with both. There is a bill that a county has put forward to do a cost analysis of all the H services. It's probably related to a public health. About or working on, which is really considering whether or not we can do what we kept on for public health. Workload model, which is actually sick for asking. Do I require services to ever actually cost them out? Vehicles. They operate under a form of some, that have never been sort of assessed, and then you thought, okay, reveal cost. So that's just. About twelve bills. There's a placeholder bill for additional funding for behavioral health residential facilities. That's actually really important in relation to the aid of SIS legislation. Bill that the O H A is putting forward related to. Doctor final term. So the O H A is not letting anyone see their legislative funds. I was unable to look at. We we've asked any, and it is asked, it is asked. That bill is critical for us to watch and take because it's a bill that will put us into a cost sharing relationship with not to put this county to not be able to place people who the hospital wants to discharge who are on aid assistance. So this scenario is. The how many dollars have not worked yet? So, you know, the whole housing. Wonderful, that's enough. Probably two years out. And in the meantime, it giving out all programs against counties and places which will possibly visit. They were going back to. Be that helped us sharing penalty. That we got yesterday. For each day that comes. So that's one of the recommendations that the O H A is to do. It historically was, it was abandoned because it didn't work. And unfairly took money out of the healthcare system. And really. To do the work. So this is on the table again. I think the position that A S P will take is if you're going to do that. It's the way to. So time was passed and residential outfits that for those people. Right now, we don't, we don't have that.
So who do you, who do you pay the penalty to, to the state?
You pay the penalty to the state.
State's creating the problem, I want to charge you a penalty.
Well, they would obviously don't see it that way. But we would agree, and I think one of the legislative concepts that we have asked to give some consideration to is actually having the O H A or the C C U's hold of resources and the responsibility of these people in residential placements. Right now, that relationship isn't connected. And so you turn one entity with responsibility, but you place the resources elsewhere and then you apply to other parties. It's not. An effective way to have someone hold the actual.
They would they use that money to keep people longer at the state hospital or they would use that money to.
We don't.
Or secure residential reading facility somewhere else, you know, there's a capacity.
No, we don't know. I know, I would have to look at how we're we're probably. And because we can't actually feed the population of the concept, we really don't know the action. So I think that's one to watch really closely. Related to that. Sponsored that bill to identify counties who are riders and hold. Just because of life. That are associated with that population, that's probably not going forward. For all sorts of reasons, they're technical. The fact that. Count, like state level to cover lawsuits that is out of. They're not looking to add to the liability. Space, right? So.
Good to have that bill at least because that people hear about the concept, even if it's an unresolved concept, they understand that.
Yeah, they have a bill last time. Possibly probably gonna propose it, I think, in the, in the. So that is another bill to keep a close eye on. And there's a ninety day telecon increase that's going to be proposed. Nami is the proponent of the bill, rep knows sponsoring the bill, it's really the health fund of both ninety day recall center and crisis funding. So right now, there's a lot of focus on global crisis, there are funding bills. Packages already in place, whether or not that's gonna add to the system to ensure global crisis capacity. All counties isn't really clear yet, they're still working. And to finalize what a cost for. For the wraparound.
Did I read someplace that shoots county and city been working together on a global crisis response? Junior, the Ben contributed a million dollars, I think I thought I said.
Been there twenty five. Yeah.
To our state.
Okay.
It was over a two year period.
Well, we have, we have had global crisis at both casting. What we're adding is the capacity to respond to crises without law enforcement. To continue to staff a twenty four seventeen with two persons versus one. Then contribute to the cost of one and a team to give up the next two, the half a dollar, which helps round out that team. We added one through some, one time only coming from the O H A. And then we hope with these new global crisis dollars, we can have additional two staffs, so we're looking at that.
I knew I'd seen something.
Yeah.
Remembering.
And that came out of, I mean, he came out of, he asked the city event for partnerships for on our stabilization center. And they did, they didn't come through on that, but they did, they they offered as an alternative. Hey, well, I mean, there's, there's a tiny fraction of that. And instead of the offer to to help build and expand our global crisis.
Sixty two percent of it will be going to the stabilization center of our city event. That's been pretty consistent. We've seen approximately two thousand three hundred plus unique individuals since it's been open since June of twenty twenty.
That's right. For the city event, you pay without the taxes.
So there is, there are also efforts to take. I don't know specifically around stabilization centers, but that's, that's a desire that entire system has. At least in terms of behavioral provider system, that county's having capacity on what's, you know, frankly, that's the proposition. Well, there may be some additional dollars identified, some, some, at some point, process, which is just starting. To all fun stabilization.
Be sure it's only that there is a policy option.
Yeah. Yeah, and we've been asked to participate in providing them a cost report to to really think about what is it that costs to.
I I don't know. From a policy option, I mean, it's just a sponsored bill, but if a policy option, that is just a good idea, maybe. And I.
Bit of an odd year because we have a governor coming in and they've decided to use a process which I haven't seen before, which changes dollars. Uh, which is the, the assets taking all the policy option packages and putting it together and a budget with checkbox, this, and so when the new legislative, when the new governor gets elected, she can with her team go through and say, yes. Oh, no, yes, yes, so they get this to asses. Uh, maybe for the same thing, what is a way for the next governor to present a budget based on. Depending on who's selected, I would see a lot of those different choices. So, but there always is an option from pop into the bill, did the same thing with the shoots. Uh, based on water collaboration, first, okay, R F W D. That was a thought that did make it through the governor's budget and took it, turned it into a bill, passed itself. So that's always possible.
So Katie's there still in town, at past. Katie Cole?
I think she'd retire.
Is she?
She's announced her retirement, but I'm not sure it's effective yet. If you, Katie Cole.
Oh, yeah, no, her grandmother is married to my mom. They're like family friends.
She's.
I mean, I just saw her in the roundup, she didn't mention. Oh, really? Her dad was.
Makes it's all over.
And there's a legislative five seven. Focused on. That's not a very interesting bill, except for checking high and long groups that was completely changed and out of the legislative, you get a lot of transpiration. For work groups, one is now addressed, but it is a reasonable. So if you have ever an opportunity to work with the difference between straight and rules for medical provider versus health provider and branch partner, tell you a little about this. It is quadruple what it is for medical provider. With each new ruling effort, with each new rollout package of funding from the O H A, how to the other. Other set of rules, I relations, or in straight lines, you can. Very little capacity to cost the effort associated. So it's actually a workforce bill from my perspective, as someone who works with staff who leave this field. Because they're big. But it will be while they're trying. And it's out of control. The concept in that piece of legislation is to, to longer term or focus work groups that actually work through the county financial assistance awards, which are. They are two hundred and eighty, there's an integral rules requirements. It's just a system that urgent without any effort to sort of manage or apply some principles to not create. So it's actually important from my perspective, I don't know if it will be one that the county is interested in, but it is. I'm interested in working diligently to see something happen.
Well, it might sound arcane, but I will tell you, that's a topic that has been almost every legislative meeting. I had a great mission about John Lightley. Over here, Springfield and Democrat. Legislators on bipartisan basis are very frustrated with what has happened. Go with response, but I'm asking this response and appointment. Response and alonizing, it's just a general feeling that in a moment of crisis, the state took way too long to respond. Great example is that House Bill twenty three forty nine behavioral health workforce plan was passed June of twenty twenty one. The first R P is for that effort to figure out a way to generate more behavioral health employees. First R P comes out this, this Christmas, you know, in mid-December. That's a year and a half after the bill passed, what's it, we say, worse, and so what did they have to do? Then they had to go back, sure says, and then pass House Bill four thousand four to fill the gap to prevent the behavioral health system collapsing completely. That shouldn't happen, so I think legislators across the border are trying to figure out, how do we make state government bureaucracy more responsive? Because bureaucracy is standing in the way and posing. And the other thing that I'll say, and I've had this conversation with speaker a few times, there isn't really any trust between what a lot of the state agencies do and their partners. The state agencies say, well, we don't trust to choose town. We don't trust neighborhood impact. We don't trust J bar J, and so we have to write a seventy nine page.
Yes.
Uh, contract for J bar J to develop to implement child welfare services and and this ridiculous level of oversight when, hey, J bar J is professional, he's been there for twenty years and I have board oversees him. So there's, there's a going on in my soapbox because.
We like soapbox.
But we ought to have, that's the problem with bureaucracy and their department, they don't trust that their partners at community level. The actual county or a city, a profit can do the job. And instead, they need to have more faith that the professionals, the experts and the elected officials, the local levels say, hey, we want to spend that money effectively. So I think this bill is very interesting.
Yeah. We refer to it as, so there's a lot of conversation. And what accountability often pays to. And recording is now. Outcomes. And I think that there's a fundamental philosophy that has to somehow be operationalized, but I'm not a person to that. I don't know how a legislature would do that. But this comes from legislature to the agencies, to the counties, to departments, to cities. And often the people holding large spurt of accountability, but least amount of power to change, it was expected, or even Katie Freeze was available. So somebody at some point has to think about a meaningful way to have investment manager for meaning and impact without imagining that me count witches for the next six months is the way to get there. This bill might be a way to fill some of these startings. But there's. Enormous. And legislators ask for reports too, so they might come point about the speed at which the organization responds. But every single request for data is another piece of work for an agency. So at some point, somebody has to find a story. Say, we have data. Maybe we'll be able to gather some large bench, benchmark outcomes. Anyway, I'm not gonna solve the problem spare, but the problem is huge and.
So. Step, step, join young soapbox for your. A huge amount, in my, in my opinion, a huge amount of the desire for accountability center comes from a very active and delivered after over, over a few decades now, to undermine a little bit in the public sector. Um, to portray uh, guilty people who do government work as incompetent, lazy, stupid. Or or you work corrupt, and so you have to be a little more be protective. And you responded that, you said, well, we're gonna make sure that we monitor these people at the yin yang to make sure that they're not wasting your money. And what did we end up doing? We ended up recording so much data on how they're not wasting your money, that we're wasting your money by, by picking them up. So I like it, it's, I mean, I think this is, but hey, what we do. You know, that. The faith of our, of our society in. In the history of the states, and there are people that actively feel to be lack of this distrust and skepticism. But the, 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 well, it's the problems that people just described, until you go back. Metal.
And one of the things I think going forward is, you know, here's what happened in the last decade. So spending money, we had a downturn, and what we decided to do was go all competitive programs. And what happened to the programs? We eliminated children's family commission, shoots county had a great. Children's family commission, they did a great work, eliminated entire children's family commission. So we lost, one example, we lost homeless service, youth homeless services in every county. And then we slowly built it back, so now we have homeless youth services in thirteen counties. And then we slowly built it back. So now we have homeless youth services in thirteen counties. So that we use seven, thirty six times. So what happens almost? Got this around about way to answer. What happens with homeless youth? That's the number one indicator of adults. So we eliminated the system that kept people refunding on these adults. Still a crisis after ten. So I think in the next downturn, what, what I think we need to say is. Let's, let's keep the programs going to the communities through the counties, through the cities, through the nonprofits, through our community advocates. Our local partners, let's keep those programs going. And eliminate the unnecessary, uh, who can sit down and buy a seventy nine page contract for Jbar J and a five page contract. For you, I can only imagine the contracts you guys.
Remember, we couldn't even get the funding from the state. Yeah, just wasn't it like a twenty three page contract that we, that Dave Doyle had to renegotiate? It was unbelievable what they wanted us to sign to give us our money that was coming through on the beds. Yeah.
And the, and there's a cost to the whole. So it isn't just us.
Yeah.
It's all those wonderful people in OHA might have great vision. That work by good technical assistance to ensure quality services are spending time by we're regularly. On one of thirty five contracts I oversee, one, one. So anyway.
Yeah.
I, I am definitely on a soapbox.
Who's? Before we move on, real quick, yes. Uh, just send me the copy of the bill and watch again some of the other bills right now.
We really want to not. Us sharing. Not now. If you commissioners are ready. That would be my reply.
Oh, we'll get, yeah. Who knows what's going to happen here in the next few months? We'll get that.
Maybe really?
Yeah.
Look forward to.
Right? You two were the last. Well, of course, it's.
Yeah.
I'm looking at my legal, um, just going off of what Jonas was talking about, our biggest concern is. Reason, um, most of the rolling that he didn't assist issues.
Good.
Obviously, um, part of that is some type of immunity in the counties and then also the status of like. For all of the. Basically, uh, requirements that are going to start shooting on the counties to take care of. And, and can I put to add that in their most recent contract that they gave us more money? They made us apply more than ridiculous weeks. Say it's a required service we have to provide. It is applied. In person to contract, slip that in so we can get our money.
And so.
So crazy.
So, uh, now you can pull it to the point where I know we're going to get it early, but just a couple of observations. So, um. One mechanism that the legislature used that I thought was throwing into this change project turnkey. Oh, whereas they said, hey, we want to allow communities to add housing, buy hotels, rent the house. And let's say we're not going to always guess, give it to a unique foundation. And your community foundations, obviously, will move quicker. Well, they did move quicker than always guess. Uh, we copied that Iris and I both worked on this, future radio, or you know, governor wanted said. For money that's going in the local communities, if we just RFP it all through the heck and the DHS and BOLI, it's going to take a year and a half to get the money out of ground. So we separated thirty five ninety dollars of that funding out. And said, that money within sixty days must be, the check must be cut to the local workforce board. So your local workforce board is these cascades. And no RMP uses, we owe a funding formula. And, and that worked, that worked great. So they, they didn't get all of it, but every local workforce board got half of their expected money. Check out of May thirty first and like talk to Heather and her team. They have programs on the ground already, override, which is destruction and. Um, so that's, that is the mechanism. That I think that the legislature on a bipartisan basis is interested in pursuing is they've seen that it, it has possibly working. Again, it gets back to what I said, Phil, which is the, the big problem with the state is they don't trust.
Yeah.
The state agencies do not trust their county partners. They don't trust their. Any action partners. They don't trust their nonprofit partners. And somehow that trust has to be put back with the system. So you don't have thirty five different state people. All you know, fifty three times a month and overregulating thirty five. My soapbox.
Sure, alright. Um, on a which, um, is not as urgent as, but the public records form, it seems always.
Yeah.
Perception, um, and we're concerned about any monetary impact that any of us changes.
The cost. It does come up.
It will a little bit, so just a little bit. So for the amount of money that it takes for the state to release money, even if you're directly named in a new household. For those who are as well, the Christmas tree list with projects dedicated to either just particular. Right, and. Back to that. Um, as you know, a lot of these things that were all funding issues from other departments. So they're all finance related. So, you know, of course, there's going to be interest. Cause there is a need. My list also said, like, we randals is if there's any procurement issues related, well, we usually try to. That usually has some. As well, um, from the treasury aspect, if there's banking or financial issue, excuse me. Uh, we do have a member in Alaf, or is it County Attorney? Officers, um, that meets with the legislators, maybe on the scale. So that is. Try to get some, some, uh, priorities through, but not always as well. As mentioned, of course, about funding. If there's any, uh, member directed spending that happens this, this time around again, making sure we have it here and we have a list of projects where you can go. Or that. You can be an efficient. Yeah.
I think on that last point, it's never too early to start thinking about that. Something, you know, asking, remember, represents for, Earth Ben South Redmond. Uh, will be asking. I talked to where it comes to your southern border. So fine, it's asking, say, thank you. No, are there going to be capital construction requests, Greg Smith, who's on to be in a capital construction subcommittee will be asking us, since he now comes into central area. So, uh, if there are. Capital construction requests or financial earmarks that, cause I don't know, I know that. Was an odd, an odd situation last year to see earmarks, because that's not typically why we see capital construction, but see it. Hundred million dollars allocated for Oregon. Senators. It's unusual rate that they like to. See.
Oh, sure. So, uh, Reski is fifty five and I live in that district. So we've got, you know, geographic, commission, three commissioners, we live all in different senate and house districts. So it's pretty interesting. You were talking about, uh, work source. Uh, so I'm on that, uh, SCAT feedwork consortium board over that thing of the chair of it right now. So when that comes around, I'll, I'll be able to do the legislative work in, have relationships with all the other commissioners. Of that to central organ on that. So six, I'll cook down the path. Say, I'll, I'll, I'll be available. Courthouse costs escalation is, is what we said, and she's mentioned here that fits right back to where you started saying. You know, some of the state projects that were funded and now inflation estimates are just taken from right off the table. Your own courthouse was going to be a twenty three, twenty four, twenty five dollar project. Lifted right up to forty something million dollars. I mean, it's just amazing hearing that number. Uh, but and, and it's all about the getting going, the foundation in the first floor is putting the second and third floor on top of it is the easy part. Cause we're talking about, how can we make it, you know, back? And it's like, it's just expensive. Yeah, it's just expensive. Broadband, if, when that comes around, or if it comes around, we've got the broadband, uh, here in central Oregon, COIC, talking about the investments. About a federal dollars coming down for that. So just topic, you know, if it comes up, that's something we can, I'll back it for. We're just talking about the fiber north to south sometimes, but you know, there's. We've got some pockets of places that just don't have the infrastructure, you know, like Tumalo. It's interesting, uh, our, our planning commission chair here or two ago. He said, I can't get on anything from my house, gnarly. And, you know, he's close, but you know, they're just that infrastructure doesn't, helps give and jumps up times to the places you think it is. And so we'll be able to do that, that work. Uh, and then. We're in a time of change. I mean, things are changing. The high speed internet, home delivery, people using video calls, working from home. Uh, transient room tax has just been working its way up here to Shu's county to, uh, go, uh. Short term rentals in Bend and, and all over the place. If it just phenomenal, but is that the right place to be? Is it healthy? Uh, people that, this used to be some people's second homes became their primary homes during COVID. So things are moving quick here.
Western of a TLT, it comes up every year, it'll come up again, which is a lot of communities, the best flexibility and way so they can make decisions. Coast had a bill. I think in twenty nineteen to say, let us use CLT money for housing for public sake. It's for the cap, but what you can steal is funding. And that got a hold was put on it. It is a reason. Transcological taxes to pay for world track championships. The Dallas, that's done, especially they will probably come back this session again with that effort. I haven't heard that there's going to be a bill for the coast, but it is a bill saying, hey, let local communities have a little more discretion, how to spend their.
So we're not at such an acute spot there, only because it's been this fun that the whole thing keeps growing slowly up here. So. We're not, and so we've been able to have resources going all directions on that. So I, I don't know where, where it, we're not in an acute spot like other places like. But their flexibility might be.
And we, and we secured our percentage direct to the county, describing. So, you know. The total.
Yeah, seventy thirty and thirty seventy.
So it's the, the total transient access. It's, it was like twelve percent, might be at six percent, um, directly to us to spread. So it's really, it's the remaining down in your one percent goes to the fair balance directly and you start respare fair amount. As that in the summer was. But, you know, for, for us, it's really, so we're, we're talking about the component that goes to the, the destination, mostly. Call it destination, that, you know, the visit central organs, this, visit us. And we've just worked to deal with them where they're going to, they, they've agreed to not spend all of the money. Uh, that they're. That they're, they're taking in because. They're not going to spend it all on most, but I'm just actually making investments in. Uh, you know, um, community amenities, basically of various kinds that are going to continue to bring tourists here and which benefit locals as well. We may not have as much for the flexibility as some, some communities. It would, couldn't hurt, I mean, you know, because, I, I mean, just don't worry, and they, they have, they have, uh, they have a workforce housing initiative that they're doing. There's no money. Uh, you know, there's no transit road tax money. But I mean, you know, they, they clearly are aware of what I, um, I'm desperate to be, it's for their center. Uh, so I mean, giving them flexibility to, you know, spend a slice of their funds on. Workforce housing initiatives. That's, that's great. I mean, it's. Uh, we're, I, I just. I like it. It's not, it's not my top, 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 but just great.
So a couple of the thoughts came to mind as I'm now about to roll, it took me a while. Uh, power, uh, you know, it's going to be interesting, just electricity, uh, dynamics are changing. Renewable energy portfolio and all that. So facts, uh, Ben, just recently, Ben went from winter kicking to summer. Uh, so Pacific Power, so it's like two hundred eighty megawatts. He keeps, this is, I just talked. But that's interesting because Facebook and Apple is four hundred. You know that Facebook and Apple is using that much more power than whole city of that. Two hundred eighty to four hundred. So that is interesting. And then, you know, uh, Korea, uh, is a community renewable energy association. I still don't have a good feel for what's really possible here, but there's just a lot of moving parts in, uh, in the world of. Generation and low carbon and all that. I would always be an advocate for biomass. We had a ten years for, uh, this effort, Southern Shu's county to bring a biomass plan in. Uh, they are blocked out by BPA wheeling capacity from solar industry. I don't know if it's all, sounds familiar now, but.
It's like the Mount Bachelor proposal.
No, this is another one. It was just that the bio green one in La Piña, I mean, they, they, and water was going to be an issue, but. Yeah, it just, yeah. So, so, yeah, I mean, they, they tried, they didn't pencil, uh, you know, small patches being discussed, uh, we've got. But other opportunities, you know, we could make small chunked up biomass, whatever, and truck loads all day, every day. We should use it for something. One of the statements I would say is that, you know, having a smoke stack with a, uh, emission control system. Uh, with hundred year old, uh, you know, tree material, you know, biomass is probably better than, uh, you know, burning ancient oil, right? I mean, it's just that, that carbon cycle is less. So there's opportunities in there, whatever it looks like. So I'll just show my passion on the subject as you get to hear it, they go on, say.
So apparently Seneca lumber has, uh, investigated throughout the whole world and they have a biomass plan, I believe, which is the other side of the mountain. And, um, they picked up some really good tips, is from what I've been told. If that does become a possibility for, you know, private business during the research. But I think, uh, coming down to who becomes governor, because both Drayson and Johnson have said that they will, um, reverse issue one ten. And to code a judge, uh. The bodies are piling up, the overdose deaths are piling up. And then I was speaking with a Eugene city counselor. Last week, uh, for her LLC, and he said, they're dying, they're just dropping over in a street, in their streets, the overdose. Now, it's.
I think, I think one ten is, we haven't talked about the one ten, it's something that is up for discussion, prompt dose, get acid for approved. And it's meeting with people and gathering, it seems like I had to guess, I would guess that. What the legislature will do on a return measure one ten, so it would be awfully hard to do. But it's a statutory measure, so it changes to it. A lot of changes they might make is trying to find a way to, uh. Better incentivize people actually go to treatment or else. That's the problem. There's so few people who are.
So few.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just leave it up for that. Nobody, nobody wants to get treatment.
Right. So that'll be, that'll be a big discussion.
Have you seen the, the videos now? It looks like India. I, I mean, I was just looking at a lot of things today and, you know, just the tents. And the people having their drugs and, yeah, it's really, it's so depressing.
I, I had a conversation with folks. Actually, it's morning.
Okay.
I should. Or. One of the things that was. Is that, um, it appears to me that legislators on both sides have a really, you know, how. Better ones have in this current state of the health digital. Advise people, uh, to provide other types of treatment supports that you want to enable up to provide on a higher level. Uh, and to really look at, okay, not constantly. Use, what are you? You've got lots of staff doing lots of review and, uh, there's.
Who did you mention? You said.
Right.
Representative knows.
It's, uh, it's the other parlors.
Yeah, he was the chair of the Wizme Subcommittee Services, sort of funding, that's for all the funding sub. He's taken off that role. And there was a labor health committee and a healthcare committee.
And the chairman.
Yeah, he was. So he's been, both those committees have been mushed and now he's back in the policy world. And, uh, so it's smart, a smart guy. I actually didn't know. Yeah, a smart guy. He comes out of the, uh, nurses association.
And really helped a lot of my. See. Yeah. And probably has a, I can say it, less than probably.
Yeah.
Just.
His, his district, his district is right in the middle. It's not the worst of what's happening. I've, I've milked. So he's seeing the impact. So he's seeing the impact.
Yeah.
The other, another problem is they're really, really, uh, but one ten is, is having an impact on kids. Because the one thing we know about heavy meth users is they lose judgment and they are out of it most of the time. Plus, they have kids, and now the kids, so we're seeing ten, eleven, what's gonna. Just really kind of get the gap, just, oh, something needs to change, just to get back to the goal, that was to get more people on treatment, off drugs, and it's.
One, my understanding is a big pool of money building up though, too, right? They haven't been able to distribute it.
Just that.
Yeah.
We are. Oh, I do think.
Fifty nine dollars for the purpose, but not, you know.
We see that people need the money in action, I think there are many, many communities that are literally just hiring staff. Well, I don't know how.
Yeah, I I don't think we. I mean, I think we can errate us straight enough that this little rollout of that, that's fine, it's today's. I don't think we can, I don't think we can declare that treatment capacity failure till we actually. Put the money on the ground and service. There's, there's, there's food in next fall, right, there's, you know, uh capability of people to go to treatment is food. And having, having capacity to treat people actually, you know, maybe better outreach, but. We don't know yet whether the pool that's being created is is uh is a.
Well, I have a chart on my phone with the overdose deaths from Oregon, and it it it's frightening how bad they've been. So um this chart is, hasn't been updated since March, but uh twenty twenty-two, but it it just looking at it in twenty twenty-one. Yeah, it's been going nuts.
Yeah, that's right, and like, as I was saying, as Mr. Brooks explained that. These dollars are just, just in the grand, so your figures from our twenty twenty-two. One of these, uh one of these resources that the people of Oregon voted to put in place were not uh operation. If you think we can wait a little bit to see whether, uh whether those investments actually have an effect or. Can't judge, we can't prejudge the investment in capacity side. If if it literally just. It does kind of be a question of how do we make sure that the next time we can publish something like this, it doesn't take a year and a half or two years to get money. Just, I kind of think it goes back to what you talked about, James, with the bill. On how do we make the, say, your response to all the communities, so we have a quicker, quicker response to prices. For the county example, and the workforce, yes, the example, those, those matters. Like months past, or it's our barriers. Maybe that be part of the, uh you know, number one ten six, the group, uh this stuff as well, yeah.
I was gonna ask about one ten on the other side of the table, it really took me this question, thirty dollars from communities and cities, we were in a lot of. To fund this project, I mean, have you heard a lot of back from.
We have.
Recent cities about applying in the.
There were deposits made by the legislature a few years ago to backfill all the sources they've lost, and they did not live up to that promise, and then there will be another push, I know. Product D O C, I talked to Ellis, very big push on this. Uh L O Cs were involved, Scott Winkles is the lobbyist who works the people in cities, and Scott is very knowledgeable. Scott has a very good ideas about, you know, instead of uh what the incentives to get people treated by. What judges could use and what courts could use, uh but yeah.
It's traumatic.
Yeah, right.
But then you have to see Channel twenty-one here, K T B C, it ran what marijuana is doing, is the kids. Because the twelve to twenty-five-year developing brain and the psychotic disorder from marijuana use, because they've always been told it's medical. And they don't, they aren't worried about, so they had a, had a really enlightening uh news blurb run in a couple, two weeks ago, I believe. And it was, it was, uh you know, it's really, it's interesting, we, you know, we've had our fentanyl loss of a youth in that. Yeah, it's, we're not immune to what's going on.
Fentanyl's an actually way for my kids, that's.
Right, it's a really big way. And then, of course, we don't, because we don't have anything to do with schools, but I see now we're at the bottom of the nation with testing. I mean, what do you think? Do you, do you hear anything that's gonna happen?
Well.
You're seeing that issue?
Yeah, getting kids back at school, well, my stepdaughter was out last two years at school, and she went to U O last year, when they, you know, and. Her college professors were shocked by who the, they, you know, how little kids that learn the thing, so.
And she was, she got into the University of Oregon, and she was one of those good students, right?
They, you know, Tiger High School didn't fail last, last year.
Everybody passed.
So I think, you know, getting kids back at school, and I I think as I mentioned before, we also work with school-based health centers, which are set up like. By the local school district and communities, and. Over fifty percent of the visits, how it's always helps, that's. Is of the. Issue instead of conflict, a lot of it's be tent as well, this is a tier areas, about fifty percent, so that, that illustrates the uh the needed. For kids at that age to be around their social circles, to keep around other people, so. County behavioral health is providing that component, because most of the, most of the school-based health centers.
Yeah, because school gets a lot better. And yet, and our statistics, I mean, locally, yeah, seven, but it's been that way for a long time, and that maybe because our. Primary care providers have been relieved to behavioral health issues, so. They're great resources.
Great, um any other comments you could ask, Jim?
Um, we have prep the list, minutes of today's meeting, and we hit almost everything, the one thing we've been touched on is relating to um probation. And Director D B Holcomb is the phone number that's on the line. Oh, it's kind of have to be uncut and provided, so I can get there, and then I think. I'm trying to.
Good, I couldn't tell by the number. TV, you should have had it before.
All right. Hi there, can everyone hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
I got silence. Oh, perfect, thank you, thank you. Okay, um, yeah, I appreciate the the conversation, I've been able to track most of it, so I did just wanna chime in. Uh parole probation is, looking, we don't, we at the moment, the association, the of uh. Community corrections directors does not have any pending legislation, uh new, new bills, but we are. Planning a strategy for a request for full funding based on the current biennium. Um, we have just recently heard through D O C that the population forecast increased. So the agency request budget um went up by about twenty million dollars. So I think that was uh three fifty-five, three hundred fifty-five million, um just a few months ago, we were looking at three hundred and thirty-five million. So the strategy is gonna be to remain fairly positive about uh parole and probation and community corrections ability to. Assess people in the system for what they need to get out of the system. And I don't know if our strategy will be to directly kind of. Point to the, the, the difficulty that ballot measure one ten has created in terms of, you know, people who are cited for possession. Actually following through on those screenings, we all have seen, I think, those pretty dismal numbers, and I think you were kind of talking about that earlier. Um, so not to set up a a combative kind of approach or a juxtaposition with. What's happening with uh ballot measure one ten implementation, but to definitely just positively highlight, you know, how uniquely positioned. Our professional field is to work with people who have addiction and criminality going on at the same time. Um, so we're asking for that, that full funding, we're working with the association, I think we've got some good conversations and relationships going with. Um, the relevant legislators who won't be changing, I think we've got some that are gonna be the same, we also are very mindful of that huge turnover in. Um representatives, I think you started the conversation with, so as far as I know, that's really what's going on in the P and P side. And nothing majorly to note on the juvenile division side at this point. So any, any questions or further comments, or what other folks know about uh stuff that I'm, I may not be aware of?
Uh, yeah, just a quick question, um, I know that uh the lobby team represents juvenile directors is Laura Smith and Sister Betsy Jones, is that same? Do they also represent community corrections?
They do.
Okay, good. Great relationship with both of them.
Yeah, they're.
Hopefully not.
Oh, perfect, yeah, yeah, they're great, I think they've been with us for years, I mean, as long as I can remember, so they're, they, they know what they're doing. Yeah, thanks.
Great, thank you, TV, thank you for um being there, is anyone else that we can't tell?
No, I think that was, that was it, then, okay. What's your job?
I know, I want to update, I want to be generous. Ask people three, say, can you meet, you remember, so they. Spray out and funding.
Yeah, we got an email, I think, on that last week, so I called them, and I said, wow, we didn't think that was gonna happen, and did anything else get remembered, just a one five percent?
What I have not gotten to the bottom of, you know, is whether, uh, whether any of our other projects.
Yeah.
That got funded, like the ones from, yes.
We, I'm about to get you overly, we got an update this week, two of the applications, so in related to facilities, uh grants were not awarded, and the third application, which was a. Solar E V charging um water station for emergency use, that Fairan Expo is still under consideration, and we um expect that we'll get. An update in the next few weeks, Jen, is that my.
They said next week, I think it was, right, so we'll see.
So that third one, we still don't.
Interesting, I mean, yeah, the advisory board meeting yesterday, they were, they said. We got this many proposals, we funded this many, here's the list, whereas I saw the shoots killing, but it didn't say what projects, but. I, I, I knew about them as fast as I could. Um, I, we, we didn't get in, we don't need to get, but the, the, the point is that, I just think. A piece of legislation was passed. The right. For progress, vision, appropriate, very few of them. Yeah. Connected dots, we are interested in this, that's. If we're gonna help first. Look carefully at what the programs actually do for our community versus a simple. How much was, how much was the Mount Bachelor project?
Wasn't it like a million? That was back.
They, they, they only gave out twelve million this time, so if they got a million, that is pretty dark.
I think that we also gave them money too, though, so, uh, you know, the hope is they can save on their propane bill.
Yeah, so this is the, I think this is what I was referring to earlier, this is the project where they're going to be spending.
Right.
Clearing uh around Mount Bachelor and the day of violence, the facility that will uh provide power for them if he's, he's right, and instead of. Take it up. Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, bachelor themselves not involved in any of the forest extension. It's just the material, most likely that comes from the national forest lands in the immediate city, you know, plant, product, deals for natural products. They're going to offset a huge amount of their propane use, so, but their sidewalks still melt. Uh, building heat.
I was, and I did, when I did call somebody to congratulate them, I said, please check on Seneca, because I've been, you know, I was told that Seneca really had done an outstanding biomass project. And then, never know, anything else?
I was mentioning, from a risk management perspective, I've always looked at things that increase counties' liability. K P J is the Oregon Proclaim Act, those things that are, are promoted or. Um promoted by the town order association. And also workers comp sites, anything to increase the county's liability there, which has been legislation last couple of years. P T S D, um presumptive for first responders, self-disability, has S D, it's presumed that it's work-related unless proven, otherwise. Um, we're seeing the impact of that legislation, so stop. Legislation, but related workers. I know that that issues come up in the context of the cities as well.
Yeah.
At least, but. And we work with um C I S to be on insurance, and we're a member of the O P, or the public entity access rule. A public entity access pool. So we, we work with other counties and C I S to purchase excess general liability insurance, cool together our high capacity. Yeah. And I'll just note that we, we have a couple of departments, a few departments separate here, so we just wanted to say. Topic, not that we have anything on the radar yet. Their assessor, very welcome, they weren't able to join us this afternoon. Uh, just so that their, their topics are on our radar, we, we're, there's nothing specifically that I have on my list for them, anybody else that I might be missing?
No, I think it's, um, that's one thing that you're hoping to any board office sort of, how often you'd like to meet, and when you'd start to like. Oh, when you start to like have those meetings, so that we can get calendars and try to get a recurring meeting uh on your calendars and certain staff's calendars as well. Uh, that's just something that we.
Yeah, remember in the dark ages, we used to meet at like seven A M here. It's a good accent.
It's more video than all, still.
We were here at seven A M.
Well, uh, you know, I, I think we ought to meet at least every other week during a session, uh I know in the past you've had a kind of a standing meeting when you've. You've invited the legislators in, uh, I think the feedback from them that I've gotten on chat with is, is, it would help them, and it was a little more focused. So they knew the three bills you already asked them about, ahead of time, I've done the same thing with Coco, you know, I found it, you know. We've got to call, tell, video tell, because we used to sit there and see at seven o'clock in the morning, forward about locations over here. And I was a lot more successful getting the listeners, when I said, I want you to talk over these two bills, or these three bills, and your two priorities. So I think having a, a, a more clear agenda to the delegation, um, that's the feedback I got from them. And um as far as time goes, before the session, it, it's easier to me, and once the session starts, it's, gets really hard. Yes, they start here at eight, so maybe that's seven o'clock time, or seven thirty time. Or during the last night, and even during the last night, a lot of the workers, so it's, I can work with the staff and it's working down, you know, to get through things to clear up. In, in this period before the session starts, what, what makes sense in order for us to be, you know? I think uh my, this is super helpful to me to guess, uh. Kind of a, in my brain, one of the best number issues are that we track, and the good thing about, you know, is I'm familiar with a lot of them, so it's. You know, I wasn't quite sure what I, ten percent or twenty percent, but I've got, I've heard of eighty percent, I want to raise today, so that, that's really helpful. Uh, but I think, you know, uh. If, the election will be important to figure out, you know, who, uh, from the county commissioner perspective, but on a legislative respect, what is the legislature? It's the governor, so I think we want to have, within two weeks of the election, a follow-up on that, talk through that, what the makeup's gonna be. Uh, and then I think in December, we'll want to do at least one meeting, a briefing, what, based on that, what do we expect for the issues gonna be? There's a revenue forecast coming in in December as well, uh, so that'll tell, tell us a lot of revenues continue to increase, and some of the, uh, the issues probably be more likely that. There arise than not arise, um, and then during the session, you know, I have a lot of bills to review, so I'll talk to the, the staff about, you know. The process, um, but I think at the beginning, probably once a week during the session. But a lot of the, we, we decide this is most important, we're, we're real, so I mean, it's, it's like, we can edit the R P process.
Well, probably the time, you know, the third week of November or something, because that'll be a little bit after the election, the lay of the land will start to be crystallized, and then. Yeah, maybe one time in December, then it'll be holidays, but then all of a sudden, it's full feet ahead.
And we did mention veterans today, but I'm hearing that a lot more veterans are committing suicide, and, and I would hope that we could do something. Quicker rather than later on that issue.
It's a lot.
Right, I definitely. So then a lot of.
So what about, how about communication, and we'll, we'll work it out more in the future, but uh, like, I mean, I've already got your phone number, so you're not gonna get on the phone, but we've got a lot of staff, we're gonna. Some of these, uh, you know, we'll be like, yep, full speed ahead, she's kind of wants to do the other things, you'll be like, well, we're kind of not so excited about that, political or not, you know, there'll be different guidance for different. Uh, but yeah, communication flow.
I think we, I mean, talked a little bit about this yesterday, we had departments kind of come through admin jointly to our lobbyists, just so that we can make sure we're in alignment with. Uh, parties and positions of the board. That's true, well, and then as far as direct communication, I really defer to the board on what you prefer to do. I think with Back West, we had a little bit of a combination, some of it was coming through staff to you and other times it was direct, so.
We've talked about it more, yeah, I don't know if we can cover it all today, but, uh, you know, we've had some of these two, uh, bill tracking tools, a little bit of priority. Do you write those? Do you have tools like that?
Yes.
But we have the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think me, maybe maybe as early as, uh, Thanksgiving, I thought Monday. Might be a really good thing. Reason I say that is that many people will then go up there at A O C prior week.
Right, that's the party.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna hear a lot. In the A O C.
There you go.
Lots of staff members will hear from their organizations, what may, what. May be happening and commissioners, everybody else will be hearing colleagues, this is what I hear is, see, it's. Maybe it's a, so it's either, either that kind of Monday, because it's fresh or Monday at Thanksgiving, which could be like light years away, necessarily afterwards.
The twenty first actually looks like it would be the best.
Okay, so maybe, maybe we can think about that, but then we can aim for that to be separate.
Yeah. And I would, you know, I always try to go to the, the L O C conference and I pick up a lot, see a lot of people, so same thing with A O C. Helpful if I could attend at least part of the.
Exactly. But I think we're gonna try to have a county dinner one night, so.
Got a schedule, yeah, good, here's our. Yes, we'll coordinate. Yeah, I'd say, you know, communication style, uh, you know, the measures especially. Uh, you call, uh, my voicemail, especially during sessions, pulls up very quickly, so, uh, if you can't, if you don't, you'll all be on the phone texting. Um, I, you and I have already talked, I'm not gonna send you back with three hundred word text responses, I'll, I'll put the responses in email, but I can do a quick response. Uh, but, uh, you know, we are between Iris, Cory and I, we're all. Think they'll find you right. Too, so, yeah.
I know, I would also say that. Mr. Attorney. I, uh, floated the idea about the. For close property tax revenue here, uh, now, tax for close property. I don't agree with yourself. I put a purge among the commissioners for us to ever again. If we're. You know, if we're, we're meeting. And ask questions and, and assess our base and. Uh, maybe not take too high ideas. I absolutely support.
Um, and then I'll just say something I said at the R B A meeting to the, the department directors, which is oftentimes you hear things from all the various groups that you're involved in. That would be very helpful for me to know, so. I'll rely on, on these two fine people to my right to decide what the quickest way to get that information to us, but. Um, if you shoot them an email, they can shoot me an email or they can flag something, but, um, it is very helpful when I'm meeting bus editors, I know this. You know, and on the phone brought those, actually, and I'd say, hey, I know you talked to James, shoots county. Uh, you know, transportation or road issues. A O C is talking to this, or that's super helpful for me, so it is, this is a partnership. Uh, it's, it's the old way of doing lobby before I got in the building, the higher lobby is to send them off to say, look, they come back and shoot, they say, well, it's what we did for you. This will work really. And the technological tools will be on the cap, like with wifi and internet capacity and Zoom calls, making it a lot, a lot easier to stay in regular communication. So that's, that's our commitment to you, that, that helps me get better, helps us be a better representative.
Are they gonna have meeting rooms over there during instruction or not? I mean, that would be all virtual.
A lot of bathrooms, so. Yeah, it's.
Do they have, are they gonna be meeting in room two or it's gonna be virtual from their office?
Well, they, they, they say they're gonna open up, uh, hearings A, B, C and the audience. Right, uh, but hearings fifty and basement are closed, the two hearings. And so they'll, because everything else is closed, then the conference that are in the wings are gonna be looked solid, so. I mean, for instance, having a legislative day, which I think is a wonderful thing to. Uh, it's really tough to have like a, a large. Okay, sorry, we're over time, but, uh, this is super.
This was actually set up. So we are, we're doing really good.
Just the last thing I want to share, just because. Commissioners have a look at your meeting agenda the next week, just for your information, Senator Finley, uh, is in then next week. He asked if you could provide a legislative update, so we did schedule that. You know, by first item on your agenda next Wednesday, so. No obligation to be up come, if you want to zoom in, be aware of your call, just so it's all on our. Uh, the department heads, uh, radars as well, let's have, we'll have a, another conversation with, uh, legislature.
He is, he is a great guy.
Yes, and the good news is you can call him at seven AM because he's over in, on the border, it works out great.
So.
Now, thank you, everyone. Welcome, Robert, thank you for being here and well, thanks for stepping up and being there, so nice. Brilliant, so have fun, hopefully invited on tomorrow morning. There's others against.